Murph, you're new to this discussion, but we've had it.
Times, I'm sure.
And my feeling is, has always been that it's really not the town's role to put money into this society. Of that, but the board felt that we should contribute. This year specifically, we're having a tough time with the budget. It's a very high increase, so we're looking to cut where we can. So I'm still of the position that, you know, I don't support the increase, so it's open to discussion.
Well, if I may, Jerry, I'm here to try to help change your mind. First, I'd like to-
If you can come up to the podium.
Okay.
Yeah, just give the mic after Julia's comment about people on Zoom.
Oh, sorry, forgot we're on Zoom. Do I need to wave or do I-
No, 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 Julie Lane is on.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and then it's also being recorded, it'll be on, you'll be on channel 22.
Oh, great. So I'm Jake myself, 20.
20.
Mary Fran, Felicia, I'm present for the Historical Society. I am accompanied by board members Marty Levin, Jeff Feingold, Chris Carey. Other board members wanted to be here, but for obvious reasons, including it, also our executive director, somebody to attend today. We are here to make our earnest appeal, to have the board retain the $15,000, what we consider, I would say is an investment. It has been said to me that it's an annual payment that was based on an agreement made several years back when a very astute town official saved about 1,000 town maps from being dumped at the recycling center. So the maps were rescued and brought to us with the understanding that we would clean them, preserve them, store them, and catalog them so that they could be accessible to anyone who came to the society. That work has been ongoing, preserving documents and recording them, cataloging them, et cetera, et cetera. It's very tedious, but another part of that agreement, as I understand it, was that we would continue to do that on behalf of the town by taking documents that can no longer be stored here for whatever reason, bringing them into our vault, cleaning them, storing, preserving, et cetera, et cetera, for all eternity. I also wanted to say that the $15,000 is really an investment on the town's part to make sure that the history and character of this community is saved. We all know that the island is in transition. There's a lot of new people coming in, certainly since COVID, we've seen a great many new residents come, many of whom don't really have an understanding of what the island is all about. Prime example, anybody who has lived on the island for any length of period of time cringes every time they hear the word shelter, as it applies to this home, right? We all know, oh, they're called shelter, and then we instantly know they are newbies and they are not, you know, right? Not to say that that is a very bad thing, but what it says to me is that the narrative is changing. There are people who are coming to Shelter Island home, creating their own narrative about the place, which may or may not be in sync with our own narrative, but the narrative that is based on the history of this island, its culture, its people. So I think it's very important that the Historical Society play a very important role in making sure that all people who come and live and enjoy the island know what we're all about, where we came from, what our history is, and helps inform the future. And to that point, the town's own comprehensive plan has a very important role for the Historical Society included in it and references us many times, including one specific area, which calls us a hardener, and that is with preserving historic documents. And that also states that it is an essential function of a municipality to ensure historic documents are preserved. So in that case, it is not a donation to us. It is, it is, I'm sorry, depress. It is an investment in the history and the people of this island to continue to offer that to us so we can do the work. It is not a cheap endeavor. Maintaining these records is very meticulous. We have climate controls, we have software, et cetera, et cetera. And people come every week to make inquiries, to research those very documents that we are protecting and preserving on behalf of the town. So that is not just a gift, it is really an investment. I think that is very much the role of this town board. With that, I have a letter that I've addressed to Jerry and to the town board that kind of outlines what I've just said. If I can get it to you.
Thank you.
And open and if any of my colleagues would like to rest me from the podium, I'd appreciate it.
I have a quick question. I don't think I was aware that you cataloged the maps. That's great, that's, you know, just to know that we could go even see if there is XYZ. But do you have documents there? Or is that on, oh, yeah, beside the maps, I mean, yeah?
We have over 100,000 documents in our archive collection.
That are from the, that the town-
There are some from the town, there are town documents, town, other town maps, historic maps, census, town census. We have records from the fire departments, we have records, I mean, it's in the letter, I listed-
Silver Beach Association, right? I know when I was researching Silver Beach, I went down there and they laid a little bit out. I had stuff from the back of the 1930s and 40s when the Silver Beach Association was first formulated, that they had on file there. It was very helpful.
It is, and a lot of residents, lawyers, real estate surveyors come to the archives because they want to research right away. They want to research where town landings were, they want to find survey maps. I mean, it is a real resource for so many people. People come to us because they want to know the history of the house that they just bought. And we have a lot of that, we've created a house registry, so hopefully in the future, we can have every house recorded, owners, and et cetera, et cetera, so that we can have those records to help people renovate, you know, whatever. But the comprehensive plan, I mean, I just highlighted this morning, the areas that very specifically talk about the Historical Society being responsible for or a partner in. And that's what I mean, it's an investment in this whole community. And I think it's important for the town to be able to say, we invest in our history by investing in the Historical Society. So, I mean, to that end, and it really astounds me sometimes when we see people come to the farmer's market and all, how much they don't know, and every time you tell them a little thing, they're like, oh my God, you know? It opens a revelation and a new appreciation for the item that maybe they didn't have before. So especially as there's change in the wind, there's developments, there's new houses being built, the worst thing we can do is let our history fall to the wayside and be kind of pushed as non-important. Just think that would be a huge mistake, so.
So during my eight years here, and my eighth and final year, this is the third pitch down here for the Historical Society, we same thing, it was almost a blueprint of the first two, where the supervisor sat with the current town board at that time and was questioning this $15,000. Each point now represents $145,000 on a budget, so that's one point. So in other words, $15,000, very close to one-tenth of one point, is what we're talking about. It's one-tenth of 1% of the budget. This is a pretty important task, to justify the expenditure in my own head, and I've said this and echoed this. I can't speak for when Dottie was charged, you know, in the town clerk's office, and the kind of exchange that was going on between her wanting to share information with the Historical Society. You now have a new person in Amber that's there. One thing that I would value more than anything is a greater sense of coordination between town clerk's office and other offices, building department as well, but particularly here with you guys. So that the initiative that maybe twice a year, that you meet every six months, what do you have new, what are you looking to get rid of, is this worthwhile to keep? Is it better kept here, is it better kept down there? Is it a duplicate? All kinds of questions that, again, I don't think it needs to be done once a month, I don't think it needs to be done quarterly. Maybe it's done annually, or maybe biannually. But it's built into the schedule where we can then turn to the taxpayer and say, yeah, we do spend $15,000. We have all this stuff that's already been catalogued in present year, you can see it. But we're adding to that on a regular basis, coordinating that effort with you guys. And actually, it helps you because you're better, you're staying current. And there's stuff that we probably have that you don't have, that's still locked up, that was never shared with you. It would be a great exchange, that's my feeling on it, and it's a great justification, you know? Not that this isn't, because I think you've, you know, I could take your notes right here and I could compare them to three years ago and six years ago, and they're, yeah, I didn't have to be convinced. Now, history is important, you know, extremely important. So I'm in your corner, but I would like to see a better dialogue, an ongoing communication scheduled once or twice a year between various offices that could utilize this service.
Yeah, I appreciate that, we welcome it, and honestly, that was initially part of the agreement, that that would be an ongoing thing. It hadn't happened probably for various reasons. COVID had something to do with it, I also think a lot of the other part was when we moved into the new building, all of our items were in storage, we had to get them out, we had to re-catalog them. But now we have an incredible vault, if you haven't been there, I'd love for you to come and see it. It is very cool, and we have the space to accommodate documents, and we should. And I welcome that opportunity to create a synergy with the town clerk's office or anyone else to be able to say, let's meet annually and decide what should come into the vault, what needs to be preserved, what maybe we already have that you don't need to keep records of anymore. So, and we're archivists now, so.
One of the most dangerous things you can have, and we had it in a school district where somebody, you know, when these kind of important records that go back 50, 60, 70 years of your school district are not kept, somebody goes in there and says, let's clean this, let's clean this room out. Somebody arbitrarily goes in there and says, they don't look really through all those boxes. They start taking very important documents, and we fill up a truck and send it to the incinerator, and it's gone. Years later, people are looking for that.
I know.
Who did it? Who was qualified to sit here and make a judgment on what stayed and what went? So, you know, having it, and the other thing is about where we store it versus where you can store it, where paper is paper and maps are maps, you're looking for longevity, you're not looking for keeping something 10 years, you're looking to keep it for centuries. So you have to have everything in a vault that's got temperature control and humidity control and everything else that maximizes the length, and when that starts to deteriorate, then obviously that has to be reproduced again, and, you know, when it was done from the original, and then kept on file. So it's a pretty important process in my mind.
Can I tell you just an example of what we almost lost? I mean, we have the photo exhibit all this season of Dr. Pettit's camp, that was 1920s camp, which is, was iconic, was then, was the camp, then it was Beconic Lodge, and now it's the Perlman Center. Those photographs we were given that were found at the recycling center at the dump that somebody was tossing, and they rescued them and brought them to us, and so we were able to put them on exhibit. I mean, things that, we had an opening preview, and some man came in and called me over and looked at it, and went to this picture and said, that's my mother. I mean, it was like, oh, shit, hot moment. That was just, I mean, I've never lost that, to be able to have someone be touched so much that that photograph was there and rescued from the dump, and that's the first thing I tell people when they come in, is that these photographs were fished out of the dump. So it would be a shame not to make the will efforts to save the documents that are worth saving. But you have to go through them, you have to look at them, and even the preservation part of cleaning a document is very meticulous and tedious. And even the materials that you store them in are not like cardboard box that you have in a closet. And those have a lifespan too, they only last 10 or 15 years, and then you've got to do it all over again because, you know, paper wears out or the plastic material, so it's a constant effort on our part. We have some fascinating documents from the founding of this town dating back to Tom Steering and Sylvester Manor, and I think the oldest document is from 16 something, where there's some Declaration of Independence of Shelter Island from the rest of the English colonies, I mean, from England. So there is some really interesting stuff there. I also wanted to say is to keep in mind, especially with the comprehensive plan, that in three years' time, this country will be celebrating its 250th anniversary. Shelter Island had a pivotal role to play in the American Revolution, we have that history. So we want to make sure that we partner with the town to be able to tell the town's story of the role we played in the American Revolution.
Also, and the comprehensive plan is a urging of the town to re-establish the Historical Advisory Committee. So one way to make sure that there is future and continuing communication between the town and the Historical Society is to have one board member, any hands, overlap on that committee when it's reappointed, redone. Not sure that we'll get to it before our term is up, but that would be a way to keep the conversation going, you know?
There is just so much interesting history. We took friends on a boat ride yesterday, came in, had never been here before. We went by the lawns of the Weber and the Bedder Estates, and then we look at this bunker-like house in the middle. And she's looking at it, she goes, how did that house get there? And I don't even know who owns it, but she brought up about historic commission, that if you had those zones in place, that house would never have been built there, you know? So you think about the character of the island and how you can preserve it to make sure that things make sense where they are. So anyway, we had a nice, great discussion about that last night, but it is fascinating, fascinating work. And I will tell you, since I came onto the board of the Historical Society, I never stopped having those, oh my God moments, I didn't know that. You know, Peter Pan was conceptualized from Westmoreland Farm. You know, I mean, who knew that, right? Things like that, so it's history that I think, that I hope the town wants to become an active participant, and keeping that money in the budget is one way you can do that.
Thanks, Murph.
Anything you want to say?
Sure.
Chris, do you mind? Thank you very much.
Thanks for the opportunity. I wouldn't be too long, beautiful Indian summer day out there. I'm new to the board, and I think Mary Fran did a very good job in presenting the case for the society. Sometimes the label may confuse the purpose or the integrity or the meaningful mission of a group, the Historical Society. Some may think of that as a bunch of people sitting around discussing the folklore and the geography and families of the island. But the society has a board that oversees a staff of the History Center, and that's where the money goes. And we talked, and you've explained about the value of the archives and the records, and it's a cultural center, all on 114 in a very important location. And that's why the town should consider continuing funding. I'm not here to ask for more, if I were not new to the board, I'd be asking for more, but I'm just here to support continuing what's been a tradition to fund that and just address the comprehensive plan, which does almost mandate that the History Center work with the town on preserving its archives. I don't know that another route needs to be reintroduced, but certainly BJ, having a liaison to the board, and we just had a retreat with the new board about revitalizing the efforts and repositioning the History Center to appeal not only to so many new residents of the island, but to rekindle what the history of the island means to the people that are long-term people or lifetime residents of Shelter Island. So again, it's, the funding is for the Historical Society, which oversees the History Center, which is a cultural institute as the library is and other facilities in the town. So I think that should be the focus of where the request to continue comes from or is looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone would like to come in and have a private tour, very welcome to giving that to you if you haven't been inside it, especially from the new town board members, new ones, we'd really welcome that.
I think it would be important for Amber.
Yeah, I would like to see how we can-
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes, and she'll meet the archivist.
Absolutely.
And see the, our computer data system where we record, I mean, it's very tedious. You're talking about records that were kept on index cards and little boxes, and now we're taking those and putting them.
Oh, I know.
It's a lot of work. Yes, I'm sure you do, I'm sure you do. And then to be able to put your fingers on something very quickly when someone comes in and says, oh, do you have this?
Yes, it does matter.
It does matter a lot, so we appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I'm coming up with this.
So enjoy that, it's a super day.
Yes, just need a little breeze, might sell this afternoon.
Yeah, it's nice.
Did that yesterday. Thank you everyone.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, I'll reach out, thank you.
Next on the list we had, we're just going to go over the capital plan.
Christina, put it on the website.
We have a page.
And it kind of, well, it sort of references a handout.
Page 52.
Yeah, it's, yeah, for you to put in the book.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, thanks. Let me go get mine. Yeah, that should, thanks.
Yes.
52, listen. Share screens. Yeah, that might be helpful.
It's more than the one page online, just to know.
Yes, yeah, it's two pages.
I just added the budget page as a last page, just so people can see.
It's a string, if you refer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for how confusing to look first.
Is it a dish, it's an extra? See what you did.
When we look at CY, is that 2023?
Yes, it's current year.
The online one?
Yes, I just, I didn't realize you put it in a separate. Oh, there it is.
It's, Christina put it there on the- Oh. She put it under like agenda and.
Oh, and tab H, all right, I'm gonna rename my, can I let it rename? Yeah, a lot of the things are in tab H. So what we did is, Capital Grants and Planning Committee had everyone, you know, every department submit anything that they thought was a bigger need, that we needed to carefully, carefully look at going forward. And so, just make sure, okay. So just starting at the top, handicap accessibility, that's the ADA project that's, we've been working on with Architect. And so in the current year, $50,000, yeah, $50,000 was allocated towards it. Anticipating in two years is when we'd actually be able to get the project started because we'll want to seek grant money for, and $500,000, we don't know if that's going to be a good number. That's one of the things that the Architect is working on, is getting cost, the costing estimates done.
Yeah, so basically for 2023, we've isolated in on Police Central, but it's on 2024, we're isolating in on Justice Hall. And then by-
For the design work.
Yes, for the design, strictly for the design work, yes, and that cost analysis and all that kind of stuff. So that, getting it, trying to get it shovel-ready by 2025, which is seeking additional funding, I don't think it suggests that we're looking for $500,000 necessarily just out of budget, but where are we?
No, we'd be looking for grant money.
We'd be seeking additional outside funding.
Yes, definitely. And then, Sepp County Radio Project, that's going, need every year, we've been trying, you know, this year, next year, putting away $40,000 to get our-
And Amber, and the other sheet on the budget sheet, you have, you know, what the appropriations are, these are all appropriations?
This is just the, this is just the plan. This is just, from here, that's where we pulled on the next page, is to what we're actually trying to fund in 2024. So, and some of these, you know, we're able to start getting, you know, taking them off the list. So the Taser purchase, that's something that's coming down the road, even for $100, you know, goes up a little bit each year. So that's, that's a future thing. Patrol vessel, we're gonna need to replace our police boat at some point. We got the current one from the county, but we don't know if we'll be able to get another one. So in a couple of years, that could be a $375,000 to $400,000 expenditure, and we just need to-
Be aware of it.
Be aware of it, so as we're looking forward. Again, we will try and seek grants or county support, again. The Justice Court, handicap accessibility, that's, you know, hand-in-hand, police, that work, you know, architectural design work and costing is being done this year, next year we'll get Justice Court done. That one's going to be a more expensive fix, so we just threw an estimate out there for $750. The hope is that if we, we'll keep moving forward on both of these, but if we have to, if we can't get enough grant money to cover things, then we may have to look towards bonding. And so if we're gonna do that, we might want to try and do those projects together so that we only do bonding once. We might get some economies of scale into buildings being renovated at the same time.
Or we may modify or scale back slightly the plan.
Yeah. The air burner that is in this year's budget, it's, or we got some preliminary work that's got to be done before we actually can do the purchase, construction. Ryan can speak to that more. That's not in this year's budget, just the $10,000 is what we pulled, because he thinks that he can find $10,000 out of current monies to start doing what he needs to do there. Road raising, two roads that need work is Ram Island Causeway and West Neck. Both of those projects would be future projects. We have $50,000 in the budget to do preliminary work and design for Ram Island, and then we'll go from there. And just see if we have, if I have any.
Yeah, it's not the whole road on West Neck, it's just those areas that flood, you know, those low-lying areas.
Arfie Island.
Yep.
Yeah, and it was decided that Ram Island was, yeah, I don't say it's a priority. The walking floor trailer is also something that's down the road, it's not in this year's budget, but I spoke to Kenny this morning just to refresh myself on what that was about, and he says they put some repairs into it this year, but if they do any more repairs, it's going, the repairs will cost more than the trailer is going to be worth. So they're gonna run it out to the walking floor trailer.
The floor.
It's the one that they use for taking construction debris off the island.
It's that long, elongated truck, yeah, very long.
The facilities master plan is something that I've been talking about for a couple of years. And I think with, you know, the look at the wastewater, municipal wastewater, if we're gonna do something with IA systems, we need to figure out how we're using our buildings.
Absolutely.
A little bit hand-in-hand with the ADA work being done. That still needs to be done, but we need to look at how everybody's housed, you know, right now. You know, we have a clerk who's, you know, practically sitting in the fireplace, just to try and find room. And I think it needs to be a little bit of a grander scale, looking at the whole 114 corridor, how we want things to be laid out, plans like that. So we did, we did have one preliminary meeting with an engineering consulting firm just to get a sense of possibly cost, we need to circle back with them. It's not a full-blown proposal, but they did send out a planner, somebody who works with Septing, an architect, and-
An engineer?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah, so they did send out- Yeah, so they did send out four people to talk with us. It's a larger firm who've done these types of things before. I put in, my estimate was $125,000. That's actually a number that I've had in my back pocket for a couple of years based upon when I was doing some research like other municipalities. One place was up in Maine, SUNY Brockport, did facilities master plan, just trying to get a sense of how much that would cost. So we currently have put of that $60,000 in just to get us started in 2024. But we need to discuss that further. And if we can, I don't, we don't think that there's any grant monies out there. We'll continue those discussions.
Just a comment on here in terms of that very important plan to be developed. Is there any possibility when we're working with this and developing and looking to hire somebody that Joe's role might be expanded somehow to provide some of this? You know, that he does have a lot of talent, you know, a lot of talent in a lot of these areas. Obviously, he's not a real planner, but I do think that, you know, again, with salaries making and the, and, you know, that he could contribute. And we might be able to get somebody to work side-by-side with Joe to be able to make this a little bit more feasible, you know? I don't think you do not need a planner, by the way. Don't misread me because I definitely think you need a planner that specializes in this. But I do think, I'm always impressed with the knowledge that Joe has on these topics and maximizing his role would be important to me.
Oh, and listing who project managers were, point people on these. I put myself down just to run point on it, but Joe Fenora and Brian Sherman is listed at the moment.
Yes.
Commissioner Public Works, both need to be very involved in this.
Yeah.
And next one is the website, which we have, we're getting it covered in 2023, so that one is happening. Kelly from seniors said that one of the cars will need to be replaced, not immediately, but in a couple of years. So she just wanted to get that out there. So as we go through and look at, you know, how we pass down our cars, whether or not, you know, how the whole fleet is being managed.
Yeah.
And that is something that I'd like to work with Brian or Kenny about, you know, just better monitoring and tracking our fleet. I know that they've got something because they repair all the vehicles in the fleet, but really just in one place. Like where, when was it purchased? Who's used it? Where's, you know, where's the mileage? What's the condition? Because it seems like we've got a lot of cars out there and we just need to.
I agree with you 100%.
More report.
Yeah.
Budget time.
Yes, absolutely important, critical.
Text receiver knows that in the next five years, she wants to do a software upgrade. So she figures that's gonna be $4,200. So she put in, her request was to set aside $840 a year towards that. It's a small enough budget item that I think we can just take the hit in one year when she needs to pull the trigger on that. Judith Assessor's put in cabinet, I think that's already off the list. And that's actually not a big dollar amount, but we tracked it on the sheet anyways. And then the car also for the assessors, they are sharing with the building department. So we were able to utilize a grant to get two electric cars. So they're out there for signing out and sharing. So that was the overall request that came in. Since we've done this, I know Kenny's talked about the sweeper. He's seen some aggravation in, you know, its ability to continue on for very long, so.
And no air conditioning.
Right, yes. So it's not, it's, it's out there as a known, but it's not yet to our.
Well, I think this is gonna be a living document, as I see it, because the grinder is now, whatever it is, seven years old. And I asked on projection on the grinder, you know, it's still in pretty good shape because we have a handler that meticulously cares for it on a daily basis. But that may not always be the case. And I said, what's the life expectancy for that grinder? And he said, well, you know, it's, Jim Gill, do you keep this stuff? Do you drive it into the ground and get a new one? Or do you wait, you know, 10, 11 years, which is only three, four years away for that grinder, and get some money back from it, you know, a decent amount of money to go purchase a new grinder? You know, we did that with the truck fleet, remember? So, you know, Jay was able to take some of our trucks, got good dollars for them. I think it was $25,000, $26,000, if my memory serves you correct. The new trucks were considerably more than that. But we got something for them. There's a part, and that's why that inventory that you just mentioned is so important because there's a part when the vehicle just breaks down totally, it's not worth anything. It really is, it has no trade-in value whatsoever. So that's something that we have to monitor on a, you know, on a more responsible basis and to maximize, you know, the dollars.
So what got, ended up getting moved forward then, as I noted, is just summarized on this second page here. So the air burner, PD radios. The EMS radios and the EMS stretcher weren't on the prior list because those were requests that had come in in the prior year. So we knew that we needed to roll those forward before we added anything new. And if you look at the budget page itself, you can see, see if I can blow this up a little bit. You'll see what was approved in 2022 and what we have approved in 2023. And I have little codes, like the ADA compliance, $50,000 is coming from grant money. And then $25,000 in the 2024 budget is coming from appropriations. So that's what that, the coding is. And then the.
Where do we stay with that carport? Has that been down at the medical, at the senior center? I think it's on our to-do list.
Yeah, I think Brian and Kelly have been chatting about it, trying to figure out a plan.
Okay, there's a lot of things on the to-do list. I look at the Silver Beach bulkhead, we don't have the $50,000. Yeah, Jay repaired that about eight, nine years ago and took a whack. And actually, this earth was coming out underneath the bulkhead. And they reinforced that. I don't know what the current status is, but some of the stuff, like when we're looking to, if we need to bring down the budget a point or something, or point and a half, some, I would go back out to Silver Beach with, you know, with Brian or somebody, take a look at this thing and see, you know, we'll see what the status is. And I'm looking to, if it's in bad shape, it's in bad shape. It needs to be replaced immediately. But again, we're gonna have to get this money from somewhere.
Well, that is in the, the Silver Beach bulkhead is in 2023's project. So it's already approved in our current year budget. So we're not doing anything in 2024.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
Talking about rolling money over that.
Okay, you'd say put it back in fund balance.
Well, depends on that. Again, that could be in terrible shape.
Yeah, right.
It could be in terrible shape. I'm not looking to do that. But when it comes time to looking for this money, you know, these ticket items are big. You know, the $50,000 here, the $70,000 there. It all adds up to a point there.
Yeah, and the EMS, the garage expansion, they're starting to move forward on that. And from the ambulance side, Mark Carnavocal is leading point on that and working with Brian, so.
That's a given, that has to be done.
And then Shelby, do you know why the $30,000 for the power lift stretcher was crossed off?
Because they got it.
Oh, okay, okay. It's just taken care of, forgot it. Okay. But that's, that's the budget, the capital budget in a nutshell.
Okay.
I assume most of these things fit under the description of capital improvements, that they're considered a capital investment rather than equipment or something like that.
Yeah.
What about the website? How does that, how does software fit into that?
It was just because it was a bigger expenditure. So anytime we're dealing with a bigger expenditure, it's like, we just want to be focused on it and take a look at it. So it's not quite, it's not quite capital, but it was planning for. I think that was it for today, just.
Amber, it's a good document. It's a useful document. It will be, it will change just as time goes on. If the alt gets slightly, things will be moved up and pushed back. But it is a, it's a good workable document. We've been looking to do this in the capital planning for years. And we finally have a document that we can work off of, which is.
Yeah, and it's a start. I mean, it's not a full-blown capital plan. Joe and Brian have been working on a much more detailed look at all of the assets, getting them.
No, your recommendation about the fleet is so important. I mean, I don't know whether, what do we own? Three dozen vehicles or four dozen vehicles? When you add up all the police cars and all the, and everything at this recycling center and the highway department, and it's a lot of vehicles. It's a lot to keep tabs on, you know, on their year board, condition that they're in, maintenance already put into it. Somebody needs to be on top of that.
Judy does.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of, they asked for that in the yearly audit, is like all of our capital, equipment, vehicles. And she, Judy handles that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ADA compliance on the budget sheet, you know, through a sheet down, $50,000 this year grant, that was the block grant, community development?
Yes.
Can we expect that again?
Well, the block grant, we're not expecting it to bump up.
Yeah, the $50,000, the first $50,000, it's been flipped as to what, which one community development block is going to fund.
Okay.
Originally, we had put money in the budget, $50,000 for police, police department building. And then we were looking for the community development block money for Justice Court. PD gets a lot more usage than Justice Court. So they said, hey, you know, like, you've got this going on. We submitted a piece of paper, they became aware of the PD one. It was like, oh, okay, well, if you'll fund that one, then we'll take the other money and fund Justice Court.
We weren't asking enough either.
And we want to up what we ask.
So we were asking for $15,000, $20,000. Well, we should have been asking for $50,000, $60,000. And other eastern towns had asked for $500,000, you know, a community block grant. So, you know, it's something that you don't, you don't get it unless you ask for it.
Right. So are we gonna, I guess, I think I didn't understand. So are we gonna ask for it in '24? Because it says an A next to '24's ADA.
It's, we're hoping that we'll get it this year. So we'll take the money that we have for $50,000 for the one ADA project.
Right.
And then get the other one funded.
Okay.
$50,000 plus we need another $25,000 because Justice Court is more complicated.
Right.
And then when we get to be shovel-ready.
Our next ask is going to be a big ask.
You're right, I think you're correct.
We have plans, we have costs.
To execute a plan.
Instead of giving us $50,000, will you give us $200,000 for whatever drives a project?
Okay.
So.
But can you, I'm sorry, I really am struggling with this. It's just, so that line, then, why is it an A? You know, that, that's just.
Oh, because you're looking at 2023.
No, I'm looking at 2024.
Oh.
Shouldn't it be? No, I don't.
Okay, all right, yes. Laura said, look at the 2023.
Says G, right?
So that's the G, so that's the grant one.
Right.
So that one is, you know, either police or Justice. And then if you, the $50,000 the year before was appropriated. So in 2022, we just rolled that money over to 2023 so that we can pay for it.
Right.
So we encumbered the money. So we already had it.
Okay.
And then the $25,000 is an A because $50,000, we did, we just recently upped.
Right.
What it was going to cost us to do the design work.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, but it's too late to go back and ask, change that $50 to $75.
$75, right, okay. Now I get it.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm sorry, it's an A too. Darn.
No, it's been a little confusing because we've been going back and forth with the county on this. All right. Anything else? So to.
Friday.
Friday. Friday, we start the hard work.
We can start at 11:00.
Start at 11:00? Okay.
Friday?
We have our ADP Department Head meeting at 9:00, and we anticipate that that could go to 10:30. So we just, we want to make sure we leave enough time.
You can do it at 11:00?
We can do 11:00. Yeah, I'm good with 11:00.
Yeah, 11:00 is fine.